Good morning, folks. We are on the air. This is a committee of the whole meeting and so, as usual, the gallery is invited to participate when appropriate. Nigel. Welcome, Rowley, James. And Jennifer, are you presenting?
We are presenting together.
Right.
Thank you.
Okay, well, we'll call this Committee of the Whole Order and ask for an adoption of the agenda. Councilor Corle, Councilor Studley, all is in favor? And I don't have my computer open, but what are we doing?
Minutes from the last meeting?
Minutes of the last meeting. Can I have a motion for minutes of the previous meeting?
Just a minute, I think I have a correction on one of them.
Get me a minute. Got to plan better for get my car out of the snow time here.
Yes, there is one minor correction. You were absent, but it says that you called meeting to order. So it was the acting mayor, Crog, that called meeting to order.
I don't have that kind of powers. That was Councilor Crog. And so, any other corrections to those minutes?
No, that was the only one I...
And a motion to adopt the minutes as amended. Councilor Thompson, all is in favor? Jennifer, you're on.
Okay.
Rowley, welcome. This is exciting information. Get ready.
Good morning.
Thank you for having us here today. My name is Jennifer Wetmore, Community Futures Boundary, and beside me is James Chatham, Regional District of Cootney Boundary Deputy CEO. That'll do. We're here today to provide an update on the Community Center project. This is a partnership project between Community Futures Boundary, the Regional District of Cootney Boundary, and the city. We have been working on this particular project out of my office since the fall of 2018 and are here today to provide you kind of with an update on a public engagement session that happened a couple of weeks ago and to allow the regional district in particular to give you an idea about next steps. If you have questions, please put your hand up or just catch my attention, I'll be happy to answer. So this is a quick overview of the timeline. 2017, Community Futures Boundary and Electoral Area Director Rowley Russell from Area D were given the go-ahead by council of the day to explore community perspective on possibilities regarding the community center. As you all know, this has been in the books for a very, very long time. We did a very quick assessment with community input and stakeholders, which at that time indicated strong support to continue to investigate a community center option. 2018, post Prichet, we noted the continued need for a community center in the face of what was a significant flooding event and the need for an appropriate emergency operations center and gathering space. We put together a funding application and received funding to develop what we called a detailed concept design process. We started that process in 2018 with the assistance of Urban Arts Architecture. Since that time, we've had engagement with over 22 community groups, 160 individuals, resulting in two possible options for a center located in and around the current recreational facilities. An open house took place at the end of January with over 100 people in attendance. Feedback was received will provide you with an overview of that feedback here in this This is a snapshot or a look at material that was made available during the open house. It's an overview of the program, the work that's been done to date. So I know it's probably hard to see, I do have handouts for you. If you would like one, please let me know and I'll hand them out at the end of the presentation so you can have those with you. This is really essentially a synopsis of the vision that was developed, the values of the project, including passive design strategies as accord to the project, the class D costing, which has been put together to date, an overview of the process, and a look at the proposed location and the program. Here, you'll see a little bit more, some of it is duplication with vision and passive design strategies. On this page, you'll see what we call concept design or concept option A. And on the next, oh, we don't have concept B in here. I have it for you. There were two concepts developed and option A received the best feedback. So that's what Urban Arts is moving ahead with. This is an overview of some of the feedback that was received at the open house. And again, I have this printed out and available for you to look at in more detail. And here is some graphs providing you a better look at the feedback that was received. So you can see option A seemed to have the most support and that is the concept design that we're moving ahead with and refining, further refining. So where do we go from here? I'm going to hand it over to James, but this is really kind of a nutshell of where we're at right now.
Thanks, Jennifer. And I guess between us as well, just highlighting, I think, important some of the key aspects of option A and, you know, why it was different to option B. Jump in, Jennifer, if I miss anything. I think option A, it really has the least impact to the site as it exists today and it would pretty much be built to the side of the existing aquatic center extending towards the skate park and a little bit around the back of the building. So to that extent, there's no impact to current parking. There are a lot of opportunities to further improve the parking and it's, I guess, the least impact and kind of operationally most efficient. So people kind of latched onto that. Option B was very, very similar, but preserved, I guess, more space towards the south, the rear of the building, and impacted more of the parking at the front. So there's not a lot of difference between the two, but option A from that ground was the clear winner. So moving forwards, as some of you may recall from discussions before, our real goal is to keep this project moving with really no break, as it were, establish, if that's the will of council, public, and so on, to move ahead. And, you know, maybe a couple of years from now, we're starting to build this. So to get there, the next step that we're going to follow as we transition from the kind of the design where it's at today is to establish what does this cost and what does the cost want to look like for us. And so over the next couple of months, and that's the last piece of work with Urban Arts and Community Futures currently planned, they'll take option A as the preferred option and we'll do a bit more of a detailed cost estimate to make sure we're comfortable with what we're looking at in terms of numbers. And we'll also then be having some more discussion at the staff level between our organizations as to what would this look like as a service, presuming it's going to be shared between the city and rural Area D. So our goal is then to come back maybe towards the end of March with that detail established to show you what would an annual budget look like moving forwards and to establish this as a new service and move ahead. And our goal will be to kind of distill that down to the expected cost of the taxpayer. So a lot of work to do with that. I think people may have seen, you know, roughly, give or take, we're talking about about $10 million figure to build the option A. That could vary. There are some things we want to explore along the way that may vary that, not by much unless we substantially change the program. And then what is the operational cost a year as well? And part of the, again, the plan, keeping it where it is intended to be and join with the recreation center, is we'll not really be looking for a significant kind of up cost in staffing to run it. We'll be combining a new reception essentially between the aquatic center and the community center. So our existing staffing that we have becomes the front kind of phase of that effectively joined building. So we're trying to limit our operational costs as well. So we're going to bring that back again targeted end of March. And at that time, again, give or take directional further feedback, we're going to be looking for a consensus that we proceed with a referendum to be conducted through 2020. And so again, we've been somewhat aggressive with timelines and our goal would be to complete that referendum by the end of 2020 so that we understand from the public, both for the city of Grand Forks and Area D, that public do support. This, we would then look to establish a service and budget going into 2021. 2021 would allow us then to complete the design in full because we're at about 30% design now. So that kind of says what we're going to do, how we're going to do it roughly, but a lot of details to follow.
Why the referendum? Is that the requirement from the RDKB?
It is. For the RD, this will be a new service, so we would have to do a referendum to establish that service.
Okay, is your suggestion that the city of Grand Forks also be involved in that?
It is, and we can look into the detail of how that would work. We've got experience kind of collaborating with the referendum with, you know, with the local municipality. But there obviously, you would have your own options to participate along that way. But again, thought at this time that it would be kind of a collaborated approach to get the feedback there from the public.
Okay, and the results are binding then?
For ourselves, yeah. And without the majority and completing that referendum, we have no other way essentially of moving forwards and establishing the service. So 2021, if we have a positive result, we complete the design and we would have, obviously, at the start of 2021, established our budgets. So that money essentially is kind of secured. We would move through the final design with an intent then to complete the design and go to construction in early 2022 when construction season would start up, kind of spring, and be building the new community center in 2022. So there's a fairly long lead time regardless of what we do over the next coming months before we could ever get there, but there were certainly good positive comments with many people around, you know, the how, what, and when, how long do we have to wait for this now if we're interested? So we're happy to have a lot more discussion around it, but again, this was more of an update for your council today. And our goal is to become, to some time end of March, maybe early April, with the more details, a more detailed discussion, and that kind of a formal commitment to move to the next stage. So we're happy to answer any questions and go from there.
Council? Can referendum be combined with a by-election?
Yes.
That's common. Yeah. Not that I know anything.
Are you going somewhere?
Keeping you on your toes.
Mexico might turn out to be pretty good.
Yeah, I think this is exciting. I've been through a number of these processes before. This is one that's taken us to a place we didn't get to on those, I think, three or four other occasions when we moved forward on this. You've got a location that's economical, you've got a cost that's under control, and what you've developed with the budget you had, which was $100,000 or so, has given us basically a blueprint for building and a path forward that we never quite got to with all the other efforts that the community has made. So I think it will have wide community support. I think the critical thing is the cost of operating, obviously.
Yeah, thank you. And that was our goal, was to get it to a place where we will be able to hand things over to both Regional District and the city with enough in that pocket to move forward with depending on council and regional district's wishes. One more thing before we go if there are no other questions. Feedback is still absolutely welcome. Francis said the Regional District of Cootney Boundary is working on a website. You can see it here, www.jointheconversation.rdkv.com. The Community Center project will be available for feedback on that website. So please, public, if you're watching, I know this is filming, it'll be up this afternoon and submit feedback accordingly.
Potentially.
Council?
Potentially this afternoon.
Potentially.
The only feedback I'm getting are from seniors and the concerns about the parking, particularly for seniors that maybe have difficulty walking, and also that the suggestion that people park on 19th is not acceptable to some of the residents. So I don't know if you can respond to that at all.
I'm going to let James respond to that. We're very aware of that.
Yeah, thank you. Through the May, we did receive a lot of comments about parking and it was, have we got more of a detailed parking and parking design? We're looking into the development of a little bit more detailed plans for the kind of the final work. We do have the opportunity to do a lot of improvements in parking on the site, although it's still limited. So that will come as we move forwards. One of the, I guess, two things with parking, we can choose to essentially invest as much as we wish in parking to a certain degree, but how much does that become part of the project, maybe, I think is into the detailed discussion. There are zoning requirements for how many stalls we should provide, but there's certainly a lot of opportunity kind of wrapping around what will be the whole building to make more parking. Of course, the answer becomes, you know, how much parking do we target specifically for seniors and other users, you know, immediately within the proximity of the building versus two minutes or, you know, kind of around from the other side? So we are aware that it's an issue of concern and there is more work we can do to address that.
Councilor Corle came back to council talk.
As I have been, part of the disabled people over the past little while is wanting to have that access. I know how difficult it is to get around even off the sidewalks onto the streets now. So anything around the community center that is for the whole community, that's all ages, anybody that has a disability must have access, an easy access, because it's tough. So please, don't put brick sidewalks down. They are really a challenge to navigate to begin with and anything like that. So it does take a little bit of design challenge for that as well, so.
Covered walkways too. We're going to see covered walkways.
Yeah, because that, once the ice turns to ice, you cannot get around.
I would suggest at this time, you know, kind of that accessibility design requirement will be one of the key things on the design kind of list as we finish it and looking at best practices. I would go as far as saying we need a very specific and kind of well-designed pickup and drop-off place. So if seniors or disabled persons are getting taken to the building or dropped off, somewhere right by the front door, generally covered, very, very easy to use and accessible as well. So beyond how much parking we can actually kind of create and facilitate right by the front door, those design considerations will be made, absolutely.
Good. Councilor Thompson?
Yes. Another concern that I've had someone talk to me about was the operating costs. So is that going to be made known prior to the referendum?
Yes, through the May, that will be all part of what we want to figure out over the next couple of months. You know, the capital cost of building is one thing, but how much is it going to cost the average person every year is equally as important. So we'll be bringing back that with that information in a couple of months.
Thank you.
Councilor Zelinski?
Any good idea of the demographics at your open house? Did we see a lot of young families?
We saw a lot of young families by virtue of the fact that we were at the aquatic center. So they were there utilizing that space, which is pretty good to see and actually part of the reason. There was a lot of concern about the location of the open house. Some of it, you know, we wanted to bring that feedback and the audience to the proposed site so that people could see the need for a larger space, bigger opportunity. So yes, the demographic was mostly seniors. The younger families were there at the aquatic center and took the time to wander through.
Director Russell, did you want to say?
Yes, please.
Get on the record.
So I had five things that I just wanted to touch on and I think we've covered most of them, but number one, kind of front and center was the operational costing piece. And so we've talked about that, but that was, I think, pretty clear guidance from both the city as well as for Grand Forks. That was one of our top concerns, to make sure that we could design a model that would keep that in hand, right? And recognizing that even if we forget the money to build a facility like this, it's that ongoing operation that we want to make sure we can keep that in hand. So I think we've got a pretty decent kind of outcome here on that and it'll be interesting to see those final numbers. The number two was that parking question and certainly just kind of recognizing that that was something that came up in the engagement and there's going to be a lot more material coming around what that looks like and making sure that it's clear in the design of the facility itself. Accessibility is definitely kind of key and part of that already. And the parking question is a bigger question than, I think, we need more information on and we're going to get that. Just making sure also, as Jennifer mentioned, that the text up there that you couldn't read, it's all available as a handout if people want to look further into those details. Number four was the engagement piece and that notion, you know, I think it was a good engagement session. We had a lot more attendance than we expected there. Just making sure that everyone recognizes there'll be more opportunities and that'll, you know, as this rolls forward, that'll take the shape of both, I think, presumed city kind of guided engagement sessions as well as rural guided engagement sessions. And so lots of opportunities. So there was a concern from, I think, two people at that engagement session that the audio wasn't clear, for example, for them, they couldn't hear. It was designed to be more of an open house, but there will be more of a traditional kind of sit-down and ask questions opportunity coming forward as well as other on this piece here in terms of the online engagement. So there's lots of opportunities to plug into that process. And then finally, you know, the question about the referendum, the one of the surprising bits of feedback that we heard repeatedly at that engagement session at the aquatic center was that it's too small and people wanted a bigger. And so that's an interesting one and obviously, you know, partly that's the nature of the group that is engaging and is coming out, but that's, you know, I think that speaks to the process of going to referendum, the fact that we've really tried hard to, in this design process through the architects and receiving that local input, to right-size this project. And so that's the balance between making sure it's big enough to serve the needs and not so big that it becomes an asset management challenge going forward, right? So therein lies the kind of that proposal that's in front of us right now, the current draft. And I think it's, given that feedback, we're probably doing pretty well, I think, in terms of right-sizing it so that it's that appropriate balance so that when we do go to referendum, we have the support of the community.
I certainly concur. It hits the mark in terms of that balance.
Yeah. And the one piece of that right-sizing as well is that there has been dialogue about public-private partnerships engaged with this process and recognizing that that is an ongoing conversation and we've kind of separated that from the primary design piece so that there is a parallel process to allow if there is an interested party engaging in some kind of public-private partnership, that that process doesn't slow down our overall project and we're open to that conversation to see what that might look like if there's, like, there's been a number of kind of suggestions and interest in the community around what other kind of pieces might be tied to that. So that's all. And to echo the mayor's comments, it's really exciting to get to this point because it's been a long, long time and a lot of work through various iterations.
James?
Thank you. Just one other point I think comes to mind because it was, lots of people ask about it, and of course, the cost is often front and center and that's a grant. So our approach, again, how we move forwards, isn't necessarily going to be to pursue grants to make things happen, but that doesn't mean we're not going to go for grants. The timeline of if we get approved to do design throughout 2021 would allow us then to have a final design that we could then look at infrastructure grants and support from. So when we come forwards, say this spring and look to move ahead, our goal will be to provide the funding and do this ourselves in effect and we'll pursue grants along the way as we go with the completed design as much as is possible. But we're not going to be reliant on grants to make it happen, otherwise our concern is we'd be kind of potentially kind of waiting, waiting in the winds forever and a day. And I think the consent is to make this happen. If grants are successful to whatever level, then obviously that basically reduces the capital cost and the actual, what it costs everybody at the end of the day. But that, to start with, will be setting out to say, we need X to make it happen and then pursue grants and things from there because that was another kind of question of interest. So again, that'll be our kind of tactic when we come back in March.
Councilor Zelinski?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So you had mentioned it, $100,000 grant to do the feasibility study and get us to this point. From this point on to the referendum itself, are you looking for any dollars from the city?
Essentially, no. We've got money left in the pot to finish some of the design work and a few things that we need. And then the moving through and kind of the referendum and taking it forward will be an RD process that we can fund, hence if we're kind of collaborated, it kind of all comes through with the RD. So really, when we kind of ink the design with a line in the sand to move forwards for now, there's no further expenses we anticipate until we kind of commit to moving past that.
Yeah, and I'm not sure that Rowley and I aren't colluding a bit here in having some money available for the next year. So to answer the question that Councilor Zelinski was going to catch us up on, send our budget.
Yeah, we put $20,000 in the budget and you tell me that we don't need any money till the referendum, so please explain.
Well, these are the unknowns.
I guess through the May, I guess we're not quite sure what we might see. Ultimately, the regional district has a small fund, I think, for each is up to $10,000 to do a feasibility work for a new service. Essentially, we would consider using that. That would obviously kind of go through our board of directors to make the determination, but that's one source of funding because there will be costs associated to that referendum and public engagement. However, as mentioned, there are some other amounts of money put to the side if this time anticipates we need other funding along the way. But we're talking, you know, a few thousand dollars to help us through this process as opposed to tens of.
Rowley, did you?
And clarification on the feasibility study funding? That's a process because we don't have, at the regional district, right, with the city of Grand Forks and Rhode Island Forks as partners, we don't have the capacity to allocate funds for a project that isn't captured under an existing service. And so in order to explore the creation of a new service, such as a community center like this that would be operated under that kind of a novel service, we have to develop a feasibility study. The way to go down that path through the regional districts is through designing a feasibility study. And that's an unusually funded service in that the way it works is that it's a pot of money that everybody, all the partners, all 13 members of the RD contribute to. And then you have access to that periodically. The board decides what projects are eligible to be considered and if it's unsuccessful, then that shared contribution pays for it. So everybody pays for it. If it is successful, so if it does result in the creation of a new service for a community center, then that new service contributes to it. So we budget for it, but it's, that feasibility project is basically saying, okay, if it's successful, then yeah, that service that gets created, that's where that money is going to come from. And if not, it gets shared by everybody.
Does that make sense?
Yeah, it sounds like we still need the 20 grand in the budget.
I think we need some anyway.
And I think, you know, that there's, just in that process of moving forward, I think it's certainly, again, given that RD budgets, we don't have the same flexibility in that as you would in your municipal budget. And so we can't move those funds around after we set those budgets. So it does make sense, I think, to have that in your mind, given that we don't know exactly what that's going to look like. what that's going to look like.
Okay. Gallery, anything? Mr. James?
Thank you, Your Worship, and good morning, Your Worship, and good morning, councilors. My name's Nigel James, and I'm a resident of Grand Forks. A couple of quick points, actually. One regarding the size, which is very important. With option A, it would, we could, it would take, we could, let's put it, we can feed 240 people at, in this situation, because the hall would have to be 2,400 square feet. But with option B, there'd be 200, there'd be 280 people. In fact, if you wanted it to be increased, I believe that the southern aspect wall could be moved backwards to include slightly more people. But that's, that's way beyond me. The other couple of points is, one, in both designs, both options, I noted, it may be a mistake, but there are no wash basins in the lavatories, which I would have thought was a health hazard. But also, I'm wondering if we are ready in Grand Forks for a unisex laboratory? People will, it could be a killer for many people, especially perhaps for the more elderly. Anyway, urinals take less room than stalls, and therefore, you could fiddle the space.
Nigel, maybe we could pause on that point and get some feedback here, because I find it quite comfortable at the spoon that they have washrooms that are unisex.
Oh, yes, I would agree. But here, you've got in one room, you've got a total of, where is it? Looks like about 12 stalls, all onto each other. So, everybody's going to be in through the door, nowhere apparently to wash their hands afterwards.
Oh, yeah. I think that's just a design flaw, in terms of, I'm sure there would be basins.
All I can say is, this design, I'm no doubt, was to scale. And to put wash basins in there, something has got to give.
On the outside of the toilet station?
There is no room for that because of other items that are there. I mean, whatever the other items are.
All right. Nigel, I think that you raised some interesting points, if you'll allow us to...
Oh, please. Thank you, Your Worship.
Mr. Johnson has his hand up first.
I would just invite Nigel down to the library to see our new wash bathrooms that don't have any sex on the door.
I agree. But here, there are, it looks like, at least 12 in one room, all joined onto each other.
I'm aware that this was discussed at length with some of the community groups and organizations. Could you get a comment on that? Jennifer?
Yes, it was discussed, and no, it is not decided. It's a proposed concept design. So, this is the kind of feedback that I'm assuming the City of Grand Forks and Regional District of Cooney Boundary would continue to welcome and engage. There would absolutely be wash basins. I would, I wish we could call Shelley Craig right now, because I'm sure they're somewhere. They'll be here in March, and we'll be able to provide very detailed responses. And I think my message to the community is that continue to provide input. This is, these are not done designs, right? These are concepts at a certain point in time that will continue to be refined. So, the gender-neutral washroom was a very interesting discussion, and I think, you know, we'll have to see where it lands. It's certainly something that they were interested in engaging with, Urban Arts were with the community. The community has input, absolutely.
Could I for the controversial councilor?
As a senior, I would like to go on record that I do not appreciate unisex bathrooms. I'd rather have a his and hers.
Well, Angela?
Yeah. I did email all of you a very long, lengthy letter that has different suggestions. Sorry about that. But there's a lot in there. Yeah. I did have some suggestions in the way of bathrooms as well. And instead of maybe just one unisex bathroom in the area where you do have the two bathrooms that have many stalls, I think there are seven for men and nine for women, is that perhaps you could shrink those down and/or provide an enclosed bathroom that would be suitable for young families, as well as people with wheelchairs. And it could also serve as a unisex.
Interesting.
But my main concern is the location itself, which apparently everyone else may be okay with. But it sits right on top of the Learning Garden, which is a project that I have myself devoted a ton of time and energy to over this past year, and has become really quite dear to my heart. And I've kind of seen how it could benefit the community. I do worry about the effect it can have on food security for the area. It is one of the gardens that is producing food that is donated directly to the food bank. And it involves community participation, and it could be very good for tourism as well. And financially, the $10 billion for a conglomeration of all the buildings all at once, well, not all at once, but in stages, to me, I would prefer to see just a community center built with perhaps another community garden, if the one in Ruckle is no longer going to be available, with a community kitchen, and, you know, maybe a greenhouse for the winter season or something. But to have that somewhere, let's say, on 72nd, where the Derby is right now, the, that area there, or down on, I think it's 72nd and 21st, where the old idea was for Tim Hortons. Like, something like that might work better, in my opinion, at this point. And I don't know if people are willing to put out $10 million, or say they will spend the $10 million or more to take on a project like this right now, or commit to a project like this right now, when we do have a lot of other issues in our, in our community. It might be more prudent to just even use a building that we have available that's just empty for now, for the purpose of a community center, until we are able to, you know, do things in another way. But that's kind of where I am. There's a lot more.
Thank you, Angela. So, to respond to where, I've seen attempts to put it in different places, but this utilizes infrastructures that is there, shares labor costs. I think those are critical parts of choosing that location. Rowley?
I was going to echo the same. So, I appreciate your comments. You answered some, or voiced some of the other pieces that I was going to bring up. But likewise, with the location, it's been a huge challenge to find an appropriate location. And that, as the mayor mentioned, one of the real advantages of that particular location is it would save on those operational costs, right? And again, the, one of the biggest concerns that I think has been raised in the past is, we don't want to build a community center that then is going to be prohibitively expensive for us to just keep the doors open, because that then in turn means we probably would restrict those hours, and eventually it would become a facility that wouldn't get used as much as we'd like it to be used. And I think a key ingredient for success here is having it be a really vibrant place, where we can keep it open and available, and available for seniors and youth particularly, at times when it would be hard if it was a standalone facility that was removed from these other kind of already-staffed facilities. So, well, to, again, to reiterate Jennifer's comment, that we're still, like, there's still, we're still trying to figure out what the plan actually is. So, all the feedback is useful. But I think the location is a good choice based on those pieces, personally. And to speak to the Learning Garden, certainly, you know, that process has taken a lot of time on a lot of people's parts over the last handful of years. Well, this location would restrict the space and would remove some of the space from the Learning Garden. I think it also would provide a lot of, again, activity and energy into what would still remain there as the Learning Garden, and could potentially make it more actively utilized as well, which, so I think there's lots of good scenarios there, and I'd be happy to talk more about what that looks like.
Okay. Counsel Corle?
I think it's a great location. I fully support that. I think the possibility of being able to host, provide, well, you know, when we have tournaments, or a fall fair, or anything like that, there would be a central place for everybody to be, rather than scattered all over. And the cost is really important. And when you can maintain that, and, I mean, anybody can build something, but it's the maintenance and the upkeep and the labor that is so important and can be cost prohibitive for different communities. And I've seen that. So, having it in one area where that can be shared out, I think that is a good idea. As for the Learning Garden, I don't think it would hurt to have it a little smaller. And it could be developed and used really well then, and possibly included for, you know, different aspects. But, yeah, I think it's a good idea and a good place. So, I'm all for it.
Counsel Corle?
Do you have a site plan picture on your presentation?
That was A. I've got it in the handout here. Yeah, it'll be on the regional district website.
Oh, yeah, I meant in your presentation. Now, if we can flip back to it, if there is one.
Oops. There it is. That's A.
So, it has nothing to do with the Learning Garden? And why is it, like, it is just one giant washer on the drawings?
Because it's still under development in terms of detail.
Still under development. So, they've allocated the square footage there.
Okay, because I saw on all of them.
These are not final plans, right? And I know, people really like to get to that granular level. We're not there yet. These are high-level concept designs. So, I keep, I encourage people to continue to think about that and to provide input, so that when, when the regional district and the city are at that granular level, they will have heard your concerns, comments, and feedback.
Rowley?
As elected officials, we know not to promise things, but I can promise you, Nigel, there will be wash basins.
At least one.
Yes.
Genesis stall perhaps. I know at a granular level, we've talked about roof gardens and possibility that they should be food gardens, that kind of concept. Again, there's cost involved in it. There's technical issues in terms of engineering, but that's one of the things I believe is here to be discussed in terms of more detail for this building.
Lots of possibilities.
All right. So, I'm feeling that we're giving this the momentum you're looking for at this point going forward, and that there will be more details to be discussed as we progress. But counsel, you're comfortable with this presentation today? I mean, seeing you nod. So, thank you very much. Jennifer James. And Rowley? Great leadership there from the regional district and community future. So, my appreciation goes out to both organizations. Counsel, the next is the presentations from staff, the monthly highlight reports. And I'll need a motion to adopt those, but we can take questions and comments and proceed with the monthly reports. And Counsel Mott?
Order, may I? This is our item five on the agenda. Regional topics for discussion with Area D.
I'll flip my seat back.
Is that not in the regular meeting tonight?
No, I think that's creating the whole agenda. Just somebody has the area director.
Order, yes, okay, yes, Area D. Yeah, I'm sorry.
That's all right.
It was bold. I didn't read it.
We occupied the first 45 minutes of the conversation. I will be quick with this part, and as always, open for questions. And again, the caveat is, thank you for inviting me, as always, and the caveat that I really try here to speak to pieces of kind of joint interest and not regional district and general business. And so, there was some questions around emergency preparedness and stuff, and that I would rather have be brought forward under a kind of normal RD business umbrella for if there's an interest in a presentation, for example. So, I have four things on my, on my list here, one of which was community center, which we've already dealt with clearly enough, I think. The Trails Master Plan was number two, and that's been a project that, you know, we started some time ago and moved ahead, I think, quite effectively with the first phase. That was a four-phase project. And we have stalled in between Phase One and Phase Two for some time, based on conversations around membership of who, you know, what the scope of that, the footprint is for what that master plan applies to. And so, and funding issues around potentially getting some provincial contributions and trying to wait to see if we could get the province to come to the table with some funding. Some of those pieces are still a little bit unknown, but the decision has been made to move ahead without Christina Lake as part of the scope of that, that outcome. So, it would be a Trails Master Plan for the boundary basically west of Christina Lake. And so, the good news is, on that front, is that then that has kind of freed us up to move forward with some of the budget kind of pieces that we have already then in play, and be able to move into Phase Two, which is the public engagement. So, hopefully, imminently, we will see that revived, and we'll actually get into the public engagement around that Trails Master Plan project.
Is there going to be a similar master plan in Christina Lake that would interlock with the regional master plan?
Part of the challenge, and I will be careful here about what I say, but part of the challenge has been tied to, Christina Lake already has a trails planning process that they have completed some time ago. I don't know the timelines on that. So, that would be what we would look to to kind of dovetail into what we've produced for the rest of the boundary. And part of it is just that the political challenges with some of the, the vision with that Trails Master Plan was very much certainly from Area D perspective, as my understanding of the time when we initiated the City Grand Forks as well, was to have a master plan around recreational trails that we use. And in, as opposed to it being a plan specifically for the rail trail. And there was, there's a lot of contention around the rail trail and stewardship thereof in the Christina Lake area particularly. And so, we, that was part of the friction point that I think led us to have that conversation, and it was agreed upon by everybody, including Christina Lake, to say, maybe we don't go down that path to try to, try to get to kind of consensus around that for Christina.
Thank you. Counsel Longland?
Yes, thank you, Your Worship. And thanks, Director Russell, for bringing the news of that. I just want to make sure I got it right. You are going to go ahead with Phase Two? The regional district has decided. Is it going to be the same contractor that did Phase One?
Yes and yes.
Okay. So, we can expect public engagement on a Trails Master Plan, Phase Two, sometime in 2020?
I am expecting it in the spring of 2020.
Of 2020?
Yeah.
Okay. My understanding of a Trails Master Plan is that the end result is that the regional district has a Trails Master Plan, you know, in place, and can then partner, is better, is in better position to partner with the province on the development and maintenance of trails, rather than the province just having to partner with a slew, dozens of stewardship groups. They partner with the regional district. That is the, that is the advantage that I'm, we're proceeding to. Is that how you see it?
That is a tricky question. So, yes and no. I see there's multiple levels of outcomes. So, part of, so, again, speaking for program forks, there is no guiding document for investment in improvements to our trail infrastructure that I can look to as a decision-maker there to be able to say, this is where those funds are, should be prioritized. And so, it's working with the community, right now, it's working with those community groups to decide what they look, what those priorities are. So, the, one of the number-one outcomes that I would see for program forks, and presumably for the City Grand Forks as well, is help in prioritizing where that funding should be allocated. A parallel outcome is tied to, I think, what you're speaking to, which is the identification of the risks and the return on actively taking a role in stewardship of those trail networks. And that is something, you know, I have personal opinion on where that should be. that is something, you know, I have a personal opinion on where that should be. I don't have a guiding document to help decide, okay, do we advocate for the Regional District to take on a stewardship role? Or do we advocate for the Regional District to more operate in a position of supporting user groups and trails groups to be able to take on those stewardship roles? So it should help make that decision. It's certainly not, from my perspective, it's not designed to come, to come with that recommendation in a premeditated kind of way. So it's not a project to say, yes, the Regional District should take responsibility in stewardship. It's to give us the information to be able to make that decision. Because we could not with our, with, just relying on staff reports, deliver enough information to, I think, appropriately make the decision about where we should fall in that spectrum of we have no involvement with trails, we support trails groups, do what they want to do, but we stay out of that equation, or we want to fully get involved with stewardship and maintenance on trails. And so it's to, it's to give us the background data to make that decision.
Follow-up?
Yeah, thank you, Your Worship. I, yes, I, it certainly is a necessary step. The Trails Master Plan is perhaps overdue to help with these decisions. Is it not so that the Regional District does have a trail service in the east end?
There, I have to ask for staff for clarity on what that arrangement looks like. But I know there are models for the east end where it is allocation to community groups, where they have a very active, you know, community group responsible for trails. They have a service to deliver funds to that community group. But again, I'd have to go back to find out what the, I don't know what the obligations are in terms of maintenance. So for, and speaking as Area D Director, my preference would be to have a model such as that, to be able to say, we are supporting our community groups, which really are the lifeblood of our community, to help deliver on those priorities that they're going to manage and deliver for the community. I don't think that we should be in the business of trails management. But that's part of, again, I don't have the background information to be able to make that decision effectively until this project is complete.
Mayor, with your patience, can I just continue this conversation?
You're so deep in it. Now go.
Okay. Director Russell, you know that recently the city has decided to rebrand itself in terms of bike-friendly, for want of a better description, and trails development are a key to part based on the Roger Book presentation. And this is, this would be trails that originate in the city and go out, but also some of the outlying trails that, you know, volunteers are maintaining and building. It's kind of timely that there is this Discover Grand Forks emphasis on trails and Trails Master Plan that is seeking public engagement. I'm kind of hoping that the two things can come together, sync, and maybe help each other. So I guess I'm looking to make sure that, you know, both the Discover Grand Forks has input into the Trails Master Plan and the Trails Master Plan might seek that input because you've got some volunteers who are really eager to give it.
Agreed. Yeah. And this, I think that that will determine the success of the Trails Master Planning Process is how well it engages with the other parallel processes and making sure we're not duplicating effort. And so I 100% agree on that. And making sure that that overlap happens is going to be maybe a little bit tricky, but I think is easily within the scope of that Trails Master Planning Project.
I've just got one more specific question, and it does have to do with trails, and it does have to do with economic development in our city.
How can I say?
And a partnership between Areas D and the city. And that basically is trail plowing. The city, I want to point, thank the city, maybe set you all on fire, by telling you right now that the city plows outside the city limits on the rotten wool trail. They go all the way to Darcy Road. And I want to thank the city for that. Because that enables a lot of people who live in Area D to use that trail as an active transportation corridor to the city. So it benefits the city and the people of Area D. Question is, what do I have to do? What do we have to do?
To get it to.
To get that plowing to Nursery Road so that that whole subdivision?
First of all, don't blow it by talking about the fact we're already stretching the road.
I know. That's the problem we've got. I always shoot my foot off. Anyhow, but I just want, I do want to point that out, that that specific, very specific example is where the city and the Regional District can work together
Yeah.
to improve the economic development and active transportation corridors in our area.
Let's see if we can talk about that in terms of getting that on the agenda of plowing.
Absolutely. And I think it's a good example of a topic that's appropriate here, right? And transit, you know, transit is intimately tied in with that. And there's another kind of, and that's where I feel like we are in a unique position as the City Ground Forks and Road Ground Forks to navigate through some of these pieces, right? So there's an example where the city is kind of going a little above and beyond to help deliver that transit solution, transportation solution. And, you know, if we look at our transit system, I would say that the reverse is true there as well in terms of there's a, it's a back and forth in terms of these kinds of collaborations to deliver a need, a solution to a need in the community.
Right. And I hope that, I hope to see more of that partnership build that transportation system.
And we've interrupted your list here, Rowley, but I assume transportation's out there somewhere.
Yeah. Well, transit is another one. I don't think we have time for it today, but I think there's going to be lots of engagement around that piece as well.
Take your time. We don't have to hear very often.
I would suggest the transit conversation, it would be great to jump into that. But maybe you have any other, a future meeting and then we can have.
We all know where we're going with public hearings on it at this point, I think seems clear.
Yeah. And really, it's an open question about what this ought to look like. And that's that we need to get the public input on, you know, do we, is it smaller? Is it the same? And is it going to cost more? Or is it bigger? And so we need to answer those questions. I want to touch on the EPA, the Emergency Programs Act modernization piece. The public engagement session is closed on that now. And the RD went through a kind of iterative process to get a fairly detailed response to that. I'm still engaged on a number of different levels with what that looks like provincially. And so just kind of making sure that's on everybody's radar here. And the, one of the kind of key elements of that engagement session, I think, for us to keep top of mind is that when they get to, the legislation itself, I think, all makes sense. So that's all kind of easily supported, I think, in principle for most of us in local government. The regulation, we did get assurance from the province that they will come back and engage again when they start to create the regulation around that legislation. And that's a process that I think everybody should be aware of because that's where the details come out about, about how do we actually deliver on these things that we know are good for the community? And how do we make sure that local government isn't taking unfair burden of expense and responsibility there?
Got a couple of questions here, if you won't mind. Council Zelinski, then Thompson.
Just a quick question. I'm assuming that the regulations and the review has nothing to do with the insurance companies and how they regulate the insurance companies or issues with them?
I can't speak to it. I don't know what that, since we don't know what the legislation looks like yet, because that process, so they've taken the feedback, they will create the legislation within, you know, ideally by the end of 2020, the new legislation would be delivered or designed and delivered and adopted. And the regulation process, I would suspect, would start before that's complete. But we don't know, I don't know what the legislation looks like yet, so we don't know what the regulation will really entail.
Councilor Thompson.
Yes, thank you. The Emergency Planning Act, we, I think, this time deals only with extreme cold weather. And if I just may add to that, there are issues with climate change and extreme heat and other issues that can relate. So we've, our city has put forward a resolution to take to the AKBLG in respect of that. And I would just appreciate your comments.
So I'm not aware of that restriction in the Emergency Programs Act. But the modernization process is essentially which, which I'm really proud that the province is getting there, is to step back from this very focused response, focused kind of process for responding to emergencies. And so I assume it aligns with what you're getting at where the, all the intention that was identified in that process is about stepping back and recognizing as a kind of disaster risk reduction strategies and enabling the provincial government and local governments to be able to take a mandated, supportive role in reducing that disaster risk regardless of whether it is mitigation or prevention and so on. So I would assume that that would be captured by these kind of, the proposed legislation changes once we see what the actual legislation looks like.
Okay. You still have the floor?
One more, thank you very much, was just the other process that's gone on that I think matters a lot to City Ground Forks and Road Ground Forks. At the RD is we now have an advocacy strategy that we have developed. And one of those, I just wanted to highlight one of those items in that advocacy strategy, which is, is kind of in the top three for the Regional District, is the conversation around furthering a community forest proposal for, for the boundary side of things. And particularly important for Grand Forks and Road Ground Forks. And so just to identify that, if you, if you want to have a look at it or talk about it more, I'm happy to discuss it further. But that advocacy strategy kind of is, will be our guiding document to say, how are we going to pursue achieving these objectives for our community? And so that's, that community forest piece is obviously would be relevant and important for City Ground Forks and Road Ground Forks.
I think it's great to see that addition to the regional scope of interest. And Rowley is the master of putting it together. So thank you very much. I think that really improves the Regional District's service. And targeting the community forests is a great start for that advocacy action. That's it?
Thank you very much.
Further questions for the Regional District? And Councilor Longland?
Yes, thank you, Your Worship. I was interested, an advocacy strategy has been developed for a community forest. There is quite a push within the province to regionalize or decentralize forestry management. There's been a discussion paper that's gone out on FERPA recently. There's a lot of interest in rethinking the management of private land forests, which doesn't apply a lot in the boundary. And at UBCM, there is quite a concern because many municipalities live cheap-to-jaw with forest lands. And the concerns are either, first, safety, fire, or water. Water's a big, a big thing. Do you see that, in your, you're advocating for a community forest, but the larger question is, would we be advocating for more regional or decentralized management of our forest systems?
Just a clarification, you mean beyond the advocacy for a community forest?
Yes, yes.
That isn't on our list of items at this point. Again, trying to work with, in the development of that strategy, we tried to kind of be pretty conservative in terms of how many items we added to that to make sure we could actually deliver on them. And so those pieces, well, there's certainly a lot of interest, I think, around that table. I don't know, that hasn't come to our advocacy strategy specifically.
Okay. Thank you.
Gallery questions? Rowley, my apologies for messing up the agenda here, but it's really welcome to have you here. It's great that we can ask questions directly of you. Councilor Corle and myself report back on the regional scene, but it's great to have you here in person. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and thank you for the invitation.
Okay. Council, now we're at the monthly highlight report. I'm used to having that regional stuff at the regular meeting. We have a motion to accept, and then we'll proceed with discussions. Council Zelinski?
Yes.
Second is by Councilor Corle. And questions, discussion? I'm wondering too, it's a really packed report, and I'm wondering if there's not highlights that anyone would like to touch on, or we can just open it up to questions from council. But there's a lot in this, and it's not my imagination, but very comprehensive. Council? I didn't see any. Okay, we'll start with questions then. Council Zelinski?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll just go through all the different reports, different departments, and we'll go from there. So.
That should be a start.
Yeah. So under development and engineering and under the general one, third bullet pointed down there that worked toward zoning amendments required to include definitions for extreme weather response shelter and so on and so forth. Could you please add community kitchen versus soup kitchen? I know one colleague has a different definition of both those things. So if we could include community kitchen, what that means in that, that'd be great.
So are you pointing out the fact that it's a derogatory term to call it a soup kitchen? We should treat it with more of this?
No, no, it's, I don't know what we're calling a soup kitchen versus a community kitchen. That's my point. So as long as we get a definition, then we're talking the same thing, whether it's, okay, if you explain a little further, my understanding is there's a definition out there of community kitchen where people bring their food to a common kitchen area, cook their food for their family, and walk away for a community kitchen as opposed to a soup kitchen.
Cook on the spot.
Yeah, for your own family. That's my understanding of what a community kitchen.
Collect community groups.
Yeah. Just being down to the definition.
There's a lot of definition needed in the two.
Yeah, we got to know what we have to look.
So you want two definitions?
I think it would be helpful, soup kitchen being nonprofit-run, community kitchen being individuals, I guess, would be my guess, but.
Ron?
I worship, yeah, no, we'll certainly do that. I just came out of Summerland, and there was another animal called the 3D Kitchen that had a completely different focus. And just, just to clarify, not to, not to make it more complex, but there's lots of definitions. We're bringing forward, and then council get one they're comfortable with, or a series of them.
And further?
Yes. Capital projects. I'm wondering, I don't see Justin here, but does anybody know whether we're getting an RFP out for the downtown drainage? Or, I know he's been on the job for a few months here, so I'm just wondering where these projects are.
Is it possible to answer this at this point?
I know he's working on the RFP for some of the design work for the DMAP-related projects. I believe he's hoping to get it out either this week or next week, along with the RFQ for the engineers for the city as well.
Thank you. And further?
I was hoping someone could talk a little bit. I guess when I read the comment on by law services, enhanced security presence requested at the library or gallery service DC, and that troubles me. So I don't know if anyone can talk about that.
Does council wish to talk about it? Does that mean I'm asking for questions here?
I'd like to answer that, I think.
Well, what's the question?
Is this a normal occurrence? My understanding is things are bad enough in town that these people needed it for the first time this year.
Daniel.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So we had a request come in from the library here, I would say about three, four weeks ago regarding real some security concerns around the area lighting, plus people not leaving the library as well. We're here in closing time. So we've asked Mr. Alcock to come to maybe help out at the library, which then also proceeded to the gallery because there was small fires being lit on the steps over there during the night and people camping there. So we've kind of increased, there used to always be somebody sleeping here or there in some of the gallery little spots there because it's like a covered area, but lighting fires is a new thing. So, yeah, we've again asked for the groups to work with Mr. Alcock to get this, to have at least some supervision there during the days.
Okay. Thank you. And further?
Yeah, just follow up with these new requests, I guess. Should we be relooking at our budget allocation as far as this serves?
Well, we are.
Well, thank you. So with the library, we have a fund that we put money in for library maintenance. So currently, this is coming out of that fund. And for the gallery, I've asked the gallery to work directly with the library slash Mr. Alcock. So it's not a city-provided service. We simply set the groups up. a city provided service. We simply set the groups up to work with Ms. Alcock.
Both buildings are ours. Does that satisfy your concern?
Well, my concern is if it's coming out of the library issues, coming out of the library operational capital fund, it's less money for us to fix that roof and do everything else. So.
Gloria?
On these, the issues of the people sleeping and such where they shouldn't, is this not a policing issue? They could be called and deal with these people who are not there legally?
They are. They are called at times. It depends on the situation, whether they try to move people along or they call the RCMP. Thank you. Okay, further comments on the report. Counsel Malsman?
Your worship, maybe I'll do the same thing that Counsel Zalinski did, just start at the top, go through it. I guess my first real one is, the first question I have is there is fire department, 32 calls, fire 16, rescue five, first eleven, first responder 11. So fires, 16 fires, rescues, I imagine. What is a first responder call?
That would be medical in nature.
Is that a medical thing?
Yeah, and they are less of those now, if you'll notice, than there was several months back or a year ago now since the change. Kevin, do you want to comment on it?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, yes. First responder calls, two, three years ago were typically in the high twenties, low thirties per month. And last year, the scope of calls was adjusted a little bit, and that's why that number is now somewhat lower. Still responding to the critical calls, but not, not going out for minor, minor things that are duplicating the effort of the ambulance service.
Correct. Counsel Malsman?
Yeah, thank you. I'll do, the public works report, snow, 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 and more snow. Thank you.
And they've done a wonderful job.
Thank you for all that diligent work removing all that snow. Can't wait to see it go. I do have some concerns about the, under general is to, the final process is required to electronically file and register with the land title and survey authority. That there's going to be electronic registering and filing documents. Sounds like a lot of work, but will provide some reduction in legal costs incurred by the city. Is this then, I was trying to figure out, has that been finished? Is that, are we filing that stuff electronically? Where are we with that?
Delores?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. It was a very long drawn out process to get through. We had to get our corporate officer set up for juror cert, and we had to go through multiple processes and registrations, and we're there. I think Daniel, you got the final email?
Yep.
Yeah, so we're there. So it just allows us, it does save us a bit of time and money on certain more simple processes. If they're really straightforward, we can file them ourselves. Where if they're complex, we will still have support from a notary to guide us or help us through that process.
But if it would streamline things?
Yes.
Counsel Thompson?
So can you now do tax sale notices filed on land titles? Or if there's a tax sale, property that went to tax sale and it's going to be registered on title, can you do that ourselves or does it still have to go through a notary?
There's different levels of juror cert, so that's the chief financial officer would be doing tax sales. We have, depending on your position, where Daniel's a corporate officer, Juliet's a CFO, you have different clearances. So Juliet has taxes and some different clearance, and then we have most of the clearances to do with contracts and land administration.
Further? Counsel Malsman?
Okay, I do worry about in that development and engineering where they say, it's been reported by staff, there's a review of upcoming grant opportunities. I'm wondering what there's are, although we have, there is one, talk about one for the act of transportation.
And I'm assuming we're keeping our eye on that, those opportunities all the time and trying to match them with our projects.
But I worry about the capacity of staff. Because right there, two bullets down, it says, you know, continued recruitment for a senior planner and initiated recruitment for planning technician.
Certainly emphasizing the fact that this department is stretched at this point for manpower. But I think, you know, researching grants is a major important factor.
Yeah, we watch them all year round, and we get stuff sent to us regularly. Our engineering firm sends us when they come up, and we keep an eye on them all the time. And we are continually matching them to our capital projects and other projects that we have going on. And the thing is, if we don't catch them this year, it could be two or three or four years before the next round for that particular item comes up. So it's something that we do do on a regular basis, and this just happens to be the time of the year that we normally, a lot of those applications are due. And so we have to make a decision as to whether or not we have the resources in-house to do the applications or whether we have to outsource that.
Exactly.
Would you outsource, so would you outsource searching for grants? Oh, no, somebody write the grant.
Yes.
We do. We do.
Okay, if you're looking for a volunteer, I can help.
Please, keep busy.
Yeah, okay, I've written lots. Okay, I do, I do want to comment. I find it kind of humorous that, and maybe it's just the state of the city, that the long range planning is identical to current planning. Oh my goodness. Are we in a loop there or?
Talking base.
So what is the current planning or what is the long range planning? I don't know if you want to comment on that, but I, is there something that's, is there something that needs to, that isn't in there then? I couldn't figure out what was missing, the long range planning or the current planning. It looked to me like the current planning was missing.
It was a test.
It wasn't?
Thinking, which one's missing?
You don't want to comment on planning?
Thank you, your worship. Yes, I also noted that the long-term wrong range planning and the current planning were identical to my way of thinking. And once I was involved in the National Department of National Defense in reorganization of one of the branches, which resulted in a saving of about 2,000 positions or so, which then etc., it doesn't matter of the detail. But what, also what I used to do when I was on the, at the coal face, I had to produce reports. I'd make sure that the reports were all slightly different to the one before or the month before or whatever, to make it seem as if I was being very active or something. And also regarding the inspections of our equipment and to make sure that you didn't put down the date when it was on a Sunday that you inspected it and things like that. I mean, because I used to have to go and examine other units and so on to make sure that they weren't cheating like I used to. And you would often catch people saying, oh, you were working on Sunday. Well, no, no, we don't do that. We've got had a football match. I said, no, no, you were inspecting that vehicle and that vehicle or whatever. So it tightens up things. And I also noted actually throughout, generally throughout the report to yourselves, to the council, that in some cases, the sentences ended with a full stop or a period, whichever you care to use. And in other cases, it didn't. In what one, I believe it was the, I can't remember now which one it was.
punctuation errors, Nigel, punctuation errors.
Well, it was, no, what it was basically that pre, on the previous report, they had probably, there was the headline or the leading, and then there was a little bit more to say what they've done. And of course, they hadn't done that this time, so they just deleted it, including the period. So it ended up, instead of having a period at the end of the sentence, there was nothing. And it shows that they've been cheating.
Okay, we got someone digging here now.
All right. The only, and I did have, and I, the, I know that they have had problems regarding keeping up to date, and this was mentioned in the RDKB meeting. I didn't point out that that time that Grand Forks has the same problem. I thought we'd keep that one quiet. But two new positions, I mean, how many positions do we have now in planning and engineering and so on? I mean, it's, the thing is.
Delores, could you answer that question? Nigel, I'm going to have to answer that and then get on with Counsel Crowe's question.
Nigel, we're down two positions, so we're just filling positions that were already existing, one and a half positions. And we oftentimes do the highlight report in a separate Word document, and then we copy and paste it into the eScribe system, which is our system. So what's missing is the long range planning, and that does happen. And because our projects go from month to month, and they don't just end on March 29th or 30th or 31st, sometimes they carry through. So we do take the previous months and we add and subtract depending on what we've completed and add new projects. So that does happen.
Efficiency, not cheating.
So in fact, when the chief administrative officer gets here, it will be his or her responsibility to make sure that positions are complete and the organization is functional and taking a load off yourself. And I'm very pleased that Counsel Malsman, sorry, Mr. Malsman, because he's a counselor of Grand Forks. It's a matter of being precise.
Okay, precisely now, we have to move on to.
All right. I'm very pleased that he noted what others should have noted.
All right, and we will tighten up our.
We're getting criticized for cutting people off.
I'm, you know, and I'm concerned about the time here today. We do have another full agenda.
But maybe he just had another.
I don't know, have you finished, Nigel?
I have indeed, thank you.
We just help each other at times, shorten and tighten things up a bit. I'm not disrespecting Nigel, and you know that, right, Timmy and James?
I'd like to have my point, your worship. I guess you do.
Counsel Crowe?
Yeah, just under development and engineering, going back to what Counsel Zalinski had said about definitions that we're looking at. And I tried to find it so I could get the exact wording and figure out where it was, but I can't find it on this thing. But I believe under extreme weather response was full-time shelter listed under it. And I thought to myself, well, that doesn't make any sense. So if, when I find that document, if I can highlight that piece, but if it's an emergency weather shelter, it can't be year-round unless we're in into it.
All right, and I'm again highlighting the fact that the sooner we get to those things, the better. All right, further on monthly reports. Counsel Malsman?
Okay, your worship, I'll just cut right to, I was pleased to see the building inspections that I think is correct, that there was just six to this, which includes just January, and is already 253,000. That seemed to be pretty significant for one month in mid and winter. That was a bit of a perk. I thought that was good. Anyhow, the question I do have though, your worship, has to do with the purchase orders issued. I couldn't understand those numbers for the life of me. Perhaps somebody could explain them. It says total value 53.5, okay. So then there was eight orders less than 55, so that would have been, let's say, 40,000. Four orders, 25, so that would be 100,000. But it doesn't come anywhere close to $446,000. Anyhow, so where are we with that?
Well, I think it was our request that we get more detail on this information.
I guess.
But if it's confusing us, maybe we also need some explanations on.
Especially in there.
But, you know, I think it was counsel looking for more detailed information on those purchase orders. Counsel?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't think Ms. Rhodes is here right now, but the way I look at it, the top portion is purchase orders. So where did we need purchase orders? There are some items that we don't have, that we don't, that we have contracts for where we don't need purchase orders. So the top piece is $53,000 worth of purchase orders directly, but we've had a total of $446,000 of total money going out.
Okay, Delores, did you have something to add?
Well, this would just be the purchase, or I'm assuming Juliet just did the purchase orders for the previous month. So those are just the new purchase orders that went out, and the expenses would be from previous purchase orders and such that were expense. That would be, and also things that maybe didn't require purchase orders.
Counsel Crowe?
Yeah, I'm not sure that anything that's been said clarifies things for me. Well, some did, but when it says less than 5,000, and there was eight of them.
That's important.
Okay.
Okay, can I give it a?
Yeah, I just.
Counsel Thompson?
Okay, so building on what our CEO said, the total value of the purchase orders that were, of those 12, was 53,502. Okay, the total value of the purchases, including those 12, and other contracts. I mean, like, I'm thinking Forest is a big one that, you know, takes a huge chunk of change. And other contracts that we might have, including with our interim CAO. So those totals all came to 446.
But does that include the direct award to Norax? Is that 25 in the 446?
Okay, now that is something that, it is included in the 446. I'm getting nods from staff. So, so yes. But we're supposed to be issuing purchase orders, but when there is only one supplier, then it's a direct award. So she's just advising that that's what they did.
Okay, so that's in the 446, but it's not in the 53.
No.
Okay, so I, we asked for this information. Now we have to know how to use it. So I think we need some.
Well, this hasn't changed. This hasn't changed from what we've got years ago.
But it, to me, it's giving us more detail sometimes than we get. So do we need more description of what it means?
I would like to myself.
So let's talk about how we break it down a bit so it's more understandable.
Yeah, your worship, I would, if anything staff could do to help us with the transparency, this is a public document as well. So please, it should be transparent and readily understandable.
By a layperson.
Yeah, we're defeating ourselves. I do have a question about the Norax engineering, the GHG mitigation assessment.
Can you hold that a second and we'll hear about the transparency bit from Daniel first, and then we'll go back to that.
Yeah, we could try maybe to realign the report by moving that total value of purchases line to the very bottom, and that maybe is less confusing than for everybody, or it's just resorted that way. Regarding the Norax engineering, I believe Mr. Watt could answer it too, but it has to do with part of the grant requirements from the DMAP side, right? Yeah, so there is some, some things that need to happen really quickly for us to get the funding from the federal government, and that was one of them. So we've got the approval to do a source on that.
Counsel Malsman?
So, yeah, so it's a funding requirement for DMAP, right? That we have to, in order to get, this is federal money, I'm assuming.
Yeah.
And is there any way within the, is the city going to have to pay for that other, or what I guess I'm trying to hint at, is a future DMAP money going to pay for that rather than the city? I, this is an example, I think, of the city paying the upfront cost. And are we going to see reimbursement for it?
Grant. Thank you. Yeah, so this is, this is one of the primary eligible costs. It's one of the upfront costs that you can even occur and get funded for before you have any kind of agreement in place. It's, and it's a fairly small project as well, complete and submitted.
Okay.
Thank you. So further? So we already have a motion on the floor to accept the reports. All those in favor. All right. The next item is the CAO, one employee of council policy. All right, the next item is the CAO, one employee of council policy. And the motion that we're looking for is that the committee of the whole recommends to council to approve policy 115, CAO, one employee of council policy at November 24th, 2020, or February 24th.
I'll make that mention.
And it's on the floor, a second for that, it's Counselor Cordley. This is moving it to the February 24th, 2020 regular meeting. Discussion on this matter? Ron, do you want to speak on it?
Your worship, just wanted to, wanted to counsel, and we made some changes to the officer's bylaw last month. This policy was, was in draft, and now that our CEO actually had a skeleton of a policy from Lake Country, and what we did is then amended with the, you'll recall, the when council would be informed, which was a concern of council and the other policy. So we've just taken those things and blended them together, so you have a true one employee policy with particularly laying out when council is informed, which I think was a concern of council.
Thank you. And Counselor, Counselor Zelinski?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. One comment and a suggestion. First page, that third bullet point down at the bottom, I like those, those numbers, it's gonna definitely tell me something, so hopefully, not only in future discussions, but what our labor is actually costing us, those numbers are gonna be helpful, so if we can get those into this budget discussion would be great. And my only other suggestion, I think, is the very last bullet point, I'm trying to find it, oh, yeah, very last sentence. I'd like to make a change to say regardless of what the CAO thinks, if one member of council asks for information, it should go to everybody regardless, instead of him making the judgment call whether it'll be, that's all.
So, that seems a substantial change?
Okay, maybe I'll just, I'll read it. Very last bullet point, second page, and I think I'm trying to get the last sentence here. All submissions to council, including staff reports, delegation requests, correspondence, will be challenged through the CAO. Significant information provided to any member of council, which is likely to be used by council or in political debate, will also be submitted to the CAO, who will ensure that all members of councils are provided with the information. And all I'm saying is, all members of council should be provided with the information, regardless whether it's gonna be used in the future for a political debate, just to get everybody on the same page.
Thank you, so the way I, the only concern I see there is, sometimes there is a small, simple request on, hey, what's going on with this password, or where can I find this link, or this site, and it's, it's specific to a certain need. I have no problem adjusting the policy, but if it's, if it's like anything and everything gets forwarded to anybody, then it may increase the amount of email that's going in and out. So I'd leave it up to the CAO.
Counselor Johnson?
Yeah, actually, I agree. For instance, this morning, or late last night, I didn't know if Ron was gonna be here, because I know he's going on a vacation with his family, and I wanted to return something directly to him, so I emailed Daniel, and I said, is Ron in this week? And he emailed me back, and I said, yes, he is.
So with that wording, he would have to have told all of council?
Exactly, and I, I just-
Counselor Zelinski?
Yeah, that's not my intent, my intent, if Counselor Zelinski wants the cost for snow removal last month last year, everybody gets that number.
Everybody wants.
Well, yeah, but I didn't want that to be a judgment call by the CAO and put him in the opposition. So as long as it's correct information, we're talking about it.
I don't think it is, Daniel.
Well, so, thank you, the one concern with that I would have is, if it's one member of council asking for a majority, a large project to be done, or like a large report that that takes up hootles of time, yes, that should be, come back to all of council, but it should be all of council doing that request as well. So it will depend on what, what these requests are, and how time-consuming they may be.
That's a good point. Yeah, some of these, what we consider to be simple requests can be costly and mandatory. Counselor Stidley?
I think this kind of does address Zelinski's concerns, because it says, which is likely to be used in political debate. So, you know, snow, snow removal costs for the past few years, that's likely to come up at some point. It may not be in that meeting, but at some point it may come up. Returning some dish to the CAO, that's not gonna come up and need to be anywhere, right?
So you think that the wording is adequate as is, counsel? I hear that. Okay, Counselor Zelinski, if you wish to pursue this.
No, no, I just brought a comment, and if everybody wants to go a different way, I have no problem.
Mr. James, and then Counselor Molsonin.
Thank you, your worship. I was surprised that it took two pages to describe a simple policy that you wanted to come out. Hiring the CAO is your business and nobody else's business. Once that CAO is organized, his business is control of all the staff. It's dead simple. And quite honestly, a lot of this, regarding the policy on the first page, that's more of a job description than what the policy is about having one CAO who controls the The first and last paragraphs would suffice, in my view.
Thank you, so it is certainly adequate, if not overkill.
I'm sorry?
I said it's adequate, if not overkill.
Oh, it's definitely overkill. And what is more, it doesn't really say exactly what happens.
Right, Daniel, or Ron.
Your worship, yes, it is overkill, but one would be surprised that this is the number one breakdown and dysfunction in most communities, is that role between the CAO. I just did a workshop on Thursday in Vancouver for LGLA, and his number of people that challenged that policy was quite astounding. So, the fact that, thank you, that some people take it at face value, there are certainly a lot of people in the community that really wouldn't understand the relationship between the CAO. So this is from Lake Country, I think it spells everything out, but I think better day around the side of spelling everything out than leaving it uncertain.
And I'd like to add, just that the, it's not just a policy from Lake Country, the LGMAs actually adopted this policy as the standard default template policy now, based on the way it's written and the detail that it provides, yet not total detail on everything, but it's their form that they are supporting throughout for other local government organizations throughout the province.
Thank you, and Mr. James?
It gives the chance of the CAO to run the organization without basically interference from any of the council, leaving the counselors to go out and find out what the rest of the public want, because they are elected by the public, and they are, should, if they want to get re-elected, they should produce the stuff that the public requires, not what the actual staff are producing.
Right, and Mr. Johnson?
I would just point out that in pre, future elections, when you have people running for mayor who've never held an office at all, it should be pointed out to them that the mayor doesn't run the town, it's the CAO that runs the town, because that's what people think, that the mayor runs the town, and they don't. People don't understand that, so.
Good point. Further, Counselor Bobbitt?
Yes, your worship, I, you know, I, it looks good, the policy, and I guess where I'm, is there any guidance in the policy with how the CAO will deal with individual counselors? How available is the CAO to an individual counselor? It, you know, that, can I, is there an open door? I got a question, got a comment, got some input.
Within our, the definition of council's role. Counselor Thompson? Do we need that workshop?
I've never found any of, with any of the CAOs, an issue meeting with them. I do, however, I don't just drop in. I always check in at the front desk to make sure that they're available, or they're not in another meeting, as a matter of common courtesy, or I will say, what's a good, I need to talk to you, what's a good time, can you give me a call, or, you know, when can I come down? I know when I was on another board, there were directors that just walked into the GM's office regardless of what she was up to, and when I worked here, there were counselors that would just come in and sit down and take up a good portion of my day. So, I mean, you know, there's, there is respect that has to be, and it's two-way street, and I, I don't see that there would be any issue with meeting with the CAO.
And I expect the CAO to let me know when they meet with council members, and so that part of the trust between myself and the CAO. Counselor Molsonin?
I'm just wondering if there's a need to state that in the policy, your worship?
This is the policy.
The CAO will be available to individual counselors on appointment.
No, I don't think so.
I think we should define our role better.
I think it's just common courtesy.
Ron?
Yes, your worship, but I think, as the CAO, for many years, the door was always open, and while I appreciated counselors that would call in the area around, you know, in the end, it didn't matter. I think that, you know, the unique nature of the CAO's role is that he must work with, he or she must work with council, and that means individual counselors with those questions. As new counselors, that may come in and have some procedural questions, as well as staff, you're kind of caught always coming to. So, I wouldn't necessarily codify that, I think that's a matter of courtesy and whatever, but I think most CAOs would welcome the opportunity. I'd much rather have a counselor with a concern come to me and then talk about it than not, and then pierce that on the council, at a council meeting, so.
Yes. Mr. Johnson?
And I would point out that as a fake counselor, I've never had a problem having a CAO meet with me and talk, so.
Mr. James?
Again, yes, I mean, from what was written down, I mean, it says the CAO as, as policy advisor, yes, it says the CAO is council's chief policy advisor, and then goes on, says it's the only one, there's a word, is chief, should be deleted, I would guess there, although if you want some technical stuff, then you get the manager of the department to come in and give you. But it goes on and says, one of the jobs is for the CAO, is relationship building with council. I find that rather offensive, in fact, it strikes me as being impertinent and condescending, and I think in the, were other examples of that through the document. Is teaching, as I would say in England, granny to suck eggs, and if you wish, I'll explain that, but that netherday.
Oh, yeah, I want to know about that.
Ampa?
I find it inappropriate for the cameraman to make snide comments to members of the gallery, and I think it's your responsibility to call them to order on that.
Thank you, ma'am. All right, council, on this matter, are we ready to vote to send it to the 24th? I think it's been well researched, and definitely defines the role clearer for our new CAO coming onboard soon. And asking for the vote, all those in favor? Opposed? Carry. Okay. You know, one thing I forgot to mention that with our area director here is that I was looking to have our introduction in terms of this being unceded native lands, but the regional district is going through some discussions at this point about standardizing it for the region, and I think that it behooves us to wait at this point till we get clear direction as to the research they've done in terms of different tribes and reactions from different groups in our area. So let's do it right, and we'll wait and see what those other bodies come up with in terms of wording before I bring it to you. Good enough? Okay, no late additions?
Though I made a very rapid comment, as you realize, I'm quite sure that the current goings-on in Ontario on the rail situation and in Vancouver is also concerning this unceded situation of the land.
Extremely complex, and I applaud anyone who takes the time to look at both sides of that issue, it is complex. Counselor Molsonin?
Yeah, your worship, just a recommendation that the Social Services Advisory Group did a bit of a study on wording for its introductions, and feel free to pass that along to the regional district as perhaps some input on what they might come up with.
Yes, and I think they have that as one of the wordages that's being used. Okay, council, we're finished for this committee of the whole? I have a motion to adjourn. So adjourn.